Welcome. This is a meeting of the Town of Deerfield Planning Board on Monday, March 7th, 2022. Welcome. And I will ask Andrea Leibson to read our introductory paragraph here.
This meeting will be held in a hybrid fashion with the opportunity for both in-person attendance and remote participation in accordance with the Governor's Bakers, June 16th, 2021 Act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including an extension of the remote participation provisions of his March 2020 executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. For purposes of in-person attendance, the Town of Deerfield will host a meeting in the main meeting room of the Deerfield Municipal Offices with remote participation details noted. So there's a way to join the Zoom meeting. There's an ID number and there's a dial-in phone number.
Thank you, Andrea. When would we have expected on March 20th, 2020 that we would still be doing this? All right, I will identify board members in attendance and this time let's go in reverse order. So Kathy Wetroba, I know Kathy is not able to join us this evening. Kathy Sylvester.
Here.
Denise Mason.
Denise Mason here.
Andrea Leibson.
Andrea Leibson here.
And Mary Cludier.
And Mary Cludier here.
And Rachel Blaine.
You're muted, Rachel.
Thumbs up, Rachel is here.
Looks like you're here.
Thank you. And I will apologize for my poor agenda management today. I was trying something new with these times and the agenda has been altered a bit. So I apologize if we scoot forward or slide back a little bit. And next time I won't be including the times. Let's see, minutes. Rachel, do you want to? I don't know if you've had any feedback for any minutes, otherwise we will, we have the minutes for January 3rd, 2022. Maybe we can have a motion to accept and then we can see if there's any discussion.
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
And a second?
That was.
Second. And I believe, Jennifer, you're saying that we need to identify ourselves every time we speak?
Yes, for anybody that's in person, I need to, to.
Oh, ironic.
Yeah, anybody that's in person, please say who's speaking because I can't tell.
So Denise Mason, I make a motion to accept the minutes of January 3rd.
Andrea Leibson, I second.
Is there any discussion? All those, let's see, in favor Kathy Sylvester?
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Denise Mason, yes.
Andrea Leibson.
Andrea Leibson, yes.
And Mary Cludier.
And Mary Cludier, yes.
And Rachel Blaine.
Rachel Blaine, yes.
And Annalee Wolfco, yes, so approved unanimously. And then the agenda also, I had an error with the date of the February meeting. It was February 7th, not the 3rd. So may I have a motion to accept the minutes of February 7th?
Kathy Sylvester, I make a motion to accept the minutes of February 7th, 2022.
Thank you.
Denise Mason, I second that.
Any discussion? All right, Kathy Sylvester.
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Denise Mason.
Denise Mason, yes.
Andrea Leibson.
Andrea Leibson, yes.
And Mary Cludier.
And Mary Cludier, yes.
And Rachel Blaine.
Rachel Blaine, yes.
Thank you very much. All right, we have not had any A and Rs submitted for this meeting. So we'll go forward with old business. And I will make note that we did submit our annual report for fiscal year 21 with a big thank you to Denise Mason for working hard on that. Thank you, Denise.
And Annalee.
And you can read it in the town meeting warrant and booklet when it comes out to our town meeting in April. Alrighty, we did distribute our planning board roles and responsibilities. Somewhat self-explanatory, certainly at the beginning through a number of webinars that I've attended and whatnot. We sort of buffed up what the roles of the planning board are according to our Deerfield laws, our Massachusetts general laws. And those, I think, are fairly non-negotiable. Excuse me, otherwise, for the planning board officers, I have talked with the officers, although we've filled it out a little bit since some of those conversations. And then the planning board members talked with some of you about that. And then also have talked with members, Jen Gannett and Sue Brulet and Bob Walden about the building assistant and assistant town administrator duty. So maybe what we could do is, again, have a motion to accept. And second, and then we can have some discussion on those roles and responsibilities.
Sure, Kathy Sylvester, I make a motion to accept the Town of Deerfield Planning Board role and responsibilities, board members and support staff.
Thank you. A second, please.
Andrea Leibson, I second that.
Thank you, Andrea. So discussion, maybe we can start with, for what it's worth, the responsibilities of the planning board as stated in the various state and Deerfield regulations. Does anyone have any questions about that? Yes, Jen?
Under the duties as stated in Deerfield by law, Section 37, Casey made a note that said, under the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th little bullet point, she would like it to say not including confidential information.
Excellent, of course. The fifth bullet down, have access to public documents or information in the possession of any town official or department, not including.
Confidential information.
I would think that would be implied, but I'm glad to state it.
She, she, she gave me a list of.
Absolutely, absolutely. Other suggestions?
Not on this page.
All right, so then we go to Chair, Vice Chair and Clerk. Any questions or suggestions? I have mentioned to some degree with, with Rachel as clerk, as she was voted halfway through the term as interim clerk. So some of these are happening for her and some aren't. But these going forward, certainly when we have our next election in June.
So for example, the draft, the planning board submission to the annual town report.
Yeah, for example. Which I didn't do. And also drafting decisions has always been a tremendous, like that gives me heebie-jeebies. And I think that that we need to look at that together because drafting decisions isn't. We need more templates for that. We need more of a guidance for that. So it may be that it's the job of the clerk to, you know, I'd like to use the word shepherd the drafting of them. Because I don't know that the clerk just jumps in with that. I remember being completely stumped with the most simple, with when you first came on, Jen, and you ended up drafting it. I mean, come on, it's just daunting. And I'd been on the board for a while and read a number of drafted decisions, but we had never, we never did them. Pat did them all. So I'd like to just throw that out, that that's not, I don't want to back off of it, but I also just think it takes more expertise than, or more, yeah, expertise.
Yeah.
General knowledge about how to do those things.
Yes, we used to have assistants from a.
For FERCog.
Mission from FERCog, yes.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, Denise.
Okay, since Annalee and I did this, what I did, and I did it last year, I mean, we both did it. Annalee started and I put it into narrative form. What, planning board decisions? A planet, oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I misunderstood, I jumped ahead.
And actually, Rachel, I have started those conversations with Jen and I'm meeting some with Sue Brulet tomorrow to find what sort of templates we do have for drafting the decisions. So I wonder if there is a way that we could craft what this states? Because, I mean, the way it is right now without a, a planning technician, Sue is.
It is ours.
Yeah, she's been sort of flying blind and getting a lot of assistance from Jen and probably from Lisa, so.
Well, everything has to go by Lisa. That's the issue of, and I think what I learned from not doing that one was that a template's really good, but really understanding what is in that template and how it works and where the pieces are. I, I, I knew enough to kind of like muck my way through it, but it wasn't going to be right. And it was going to then take somebody else a ton of time to unmuck it. And, and then it goes to, you know, then it may need to go to Lisa. So it's not that a lawyer doesn't need to draft a decision, per se. Anyway, sorry, stop.
Jennifer?
Well, I think that, you know, using a template that, that perhaps it starts with Sue Brulet putting in some of the pieces. Just stuff, this is when it was, application came in and this was what was, was voted. I mean, the thing is, is that we need to have all of those meetings materials together in one place so that it's easy. You're not digging for them. You're not trying to look of, well, when was it put in the paper? And when was the second time it went in the paper? And what was the vote for each one of, you know, the points of the decision? And then who said what? And this is where the clerk comes in, 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 in her job is, is who voted for what and who, who said what? Because that needs to be part of that decision. That's is really challenging.
Perhaps what we need to do is have a little bit more research first on what happens with actually drafting decisions. Because at this point, I mean, what was actually in, I think even the previous 2011, maybe not, planning board roles and responsibilities. It was a statement that the, you know, that the assistant, not Jen, but another assistant would process planning board decisions. And, oh, what does that mean? So maybe.
Well, the decisions came to her.
Well, the, the. Yeah, so when the decision comes to the assistant, then, then that, you know, you take it and you stamp it in at the clerk's office and then you wait the 21 days and you notify the applicant that they need to pick up the decision and file it at the Registry of Deeds and, you know, and.
That was all after it was written.
After it's written. So the processing is different than actually drafting or writing the decision with all of the information in it. And the other thing that is important that we can discuss, maybe, I don't know, tonight or another night, is conditions. So, you know, what are you supposed to be looking for? What are things that are good to, what are sort of standard conditions? And what are other things that you need to think about for the future? Because somebody 50 years from now is going to dig up this decision.
Right.
Right, right. Well, perhaps what we can do is, Rachel, when you get back, I mean, I'm meeting with Sue tomorrow and I can start gathering some of, at least seeing materials of some, what some of the decisions have looked like. And then maybe the three of us, maybe with Jennifer, can actually have a conversation.
We have a, we have a, we have a perfect example right now on our, in front of us with the North Main Street Park and. So I think as we go along and we're gathering all the information, we've got each of the, you know, notes from the, and so we make a file and maybe we get Sue to help us make that file so that when it comes time to draft a decision, we've got enough information there so that, and again, I'm just going to go back though, that I feel very uncomfortable being the person who's in charge of drafting a decision. But at least at that point, we maybe have a consultant or somebody who can help us put that together. Because that'll be a big one. That'll be more than, the last one was a driveway beside the Yankee Candle, as far as I can remember, the Yankee Candle, that parking lot.
Right, I think we're all on the same wavelength in terms of, there needs to be some more work on this. So there might be two ways of going about it. One is that we can just table approving the entire roles and responsibilities until we figure that out. We could also just take the whole decision piece off of it. Or thirdly, I guess, try to.
Well, is there some way of saying that that clerk is in charge of? Because I do think the clerk is in charge of gathering materials that, and information to secure a quality, you know, to secure the information, to gather the information necessary for.
But, yeah, I'm not certain that you would be the one who's responsible for gathering all of the minutes and all of the votes and, I don't know.
But that's, that is actually, that is exactly what the clerk does, you know? I mean, that's, the clerk has all that information and also works with then the building assistant to get what she has or he has, whoever that person is going to be. And, and I think that if you put that person in charge of that, then you're come that much closer to, you still haven't decided who's going to write the decision. But you, but you put the person who's sitting with the information in front of them or should have the information in front of them, you're putting them in charge of at least gathering the information that will make that so much easier to write for somebody who knows how to do the, that.
So how would you say?
So gather the information necessary to, to write the decision. And that may mean sitting down with a building assistant. That may mean doing a little extra, but it also means going through the notes, minutes, et cetera. That puts it a little closer to the clerk, but it doesn't put on the clerk to write the decision, which is the piece that I'm the most uncomfortable with. Just, and I don't know, and Mary, I mean, it, it just feels like very daunting. Did you write that? I don't know, anyway, no.
No, I'm not sure how I escaped this.
Well, we haven't had a major decision since that parking right next to, to Yankee Candle.
Can I ask, this is Andrea, I have, I have a question.
Yes, Andrea. Try to still try to.
I'm sorry, for, for clarity for right now, so the annual town report.
Is different.
Is different. So that has been completed for this year.
Correct.
By other people. By Denise, which is, yay Denise, thank you. And then really should be the clerk. Again, the clerk has the information in front of them. So, you know, these are the things, so the clerk has that, everybody has the notes. So Denise had the notes, so she can do all of that and that's wonderful. But it, it is the clerk's job.
Right, so.
All did it for years.
Right, my question really is, are we, are we set for what we need to have in the annual town warrant for this year?
Yes.
So regardless of who should have written it?
Yes.
Done, check.
The, the, the annual town report.
Yes.
That's done.
And it will be, it'll be included in the warrant.
Yes.
Okay, right, right now it says that the clerk does that. The clerk did not do that, correct? I'm just making sure I, I understand. So now we've been, what we've been really talking about is the draft, the decisions.
Correct.
Okay. So my, my point was, we are okay for this year for what we need to have done for the annual town meeting.
Correct, correct. So the question, I guess, Rachel, you were starting to propose that the wording for this could be gather next, necessary, gather information necessary for drafting decisions of board actions. And it's.
Yes.
Becomes a question as to how that decision gets drafted.
We, we haven't, we haven't put it in there yet, but I, I feel like if you're, I mean, you can put it in clerks' hands. I'm just, the last time that was, I, I, I wasn't even the clerk. It was just the last time that came up, it was horrifying. And Tony wasn't, he kept waiting and waiting and waiting and it's bad.
And I didn't do it last time either, either Annalee and Denise did it. And the amount of work that the clerk.
Oh, no, no, we're back, no, so not the town report.
Oh.
This, we haven't had a decision with, this current, we haven't had a decision.
Well, I guess, I, I guess.
We all have ones, they're very different.
There's a crazy amount of work, like it's a little disproportionate. It's like a curse, I'm just saying. Like that if we're looking at the roles and responsibilities, it, it's disproportionate, that's all I'm going to say.
Denise, thank you, thank you, Mary. Jennifer?
Well, I was just thinking, since it seems that, you know, we're very green board and maybe to put in here is that we are.
And I just, I just really, I'd like to strike that, we're not that green. It's not about being green because, and the years that, in the years that I have been on the board, we've never written a decision. The board has never written decisions.
Well, that's what I mean to writing the, we're talking about decisions. So I'm like, when, when we're, so I'm just making the suggestion that we put in that the, that the gathering of information and the writing of the draft, I mean, it, it's almost like you need to take that out because if it stays in there, because we're going to make a lot of changes in the next few months, I hope. So putting that in there doesn't make any sense whatsoever. Maybe it just says gathering the information for the special permits is the job of the clerk and not have anything about what's, who's writing it because we don't know yet. Either we're going to have a planner or we're going to have to write it all as a board and with staff together and then bring it to a meeting to discuss it and write it in a meeting. And to be like, okay, here is the template, Sue has filled in X, let's all fill in this as we go along and write the decision together in an, in an open meeting. Because then we can fill it in as a board and it's not put on.
Sure, we want to write.
Excuse me, Rachel?
I'm not sure we write it as a, as a group. I just think that the gap, the information needs to be gathered and somebody who's adept, who's, this is what they do in writing a decision, writes it. And, and so we get a consultant for it. I don't, I, I, I think this is a pure and simple, easy consultancy. I, I just don't think that something that goes on the record should come from somebody, you know, who has a, a master's degree in teaching or, or, you know, whatever. I mean, I, and I'm, I've been on the board for a long time. No, not, you know, we didn't write the, the, the decisions. So we should get somebody to write the decisions and somebody should gather the information. And if that's the clerk, that's the clerk. But I don't, I, I'm kind of standing with this. I, I don't see that that is.
It sounds like what we have talked about is adjusting this to say gather necessary information, necessary, gather information necessary for drafting the decisions. And then that's under the clerk, under the building assistance. It says process planning board decisions. In both situations, there's a little bit of loosey-goosey with who's writing it, who, what, what does processing mean? But at this point, maybe this is fine for going forward and this is a fluid document and another point can be revised.
So take those.
Okay.
I think it leaves a little bit in the clerk. I think it leaves a little bit for the board, but the bottom line is the only decisions I have ever read are the ones that we've made. So that's a really limited group of decisions. I mean, I'm just not that first.
Thank you.
Denise?
Okay, I'm not talking about who's going to write the decision. I, obviously, we cannot decide that tonight. What I want to talk about is gathering the information. If we know we have to write a decision, this is the same thing that sort of happened with the, our annual report. It's not all at the end, okay, let's gather the information. When we know we're going to have to do it, you look at the minutes, circle anything pertinent to that decision and let's gather the information as we go along, so it's not a big mess. I know it sounds simple, but I know how these things work. It's like all of a sudden, you know, everyone panics and gathers the information. Sort of the same thing happened with the annual report.
Right, or however the clerk's method is, but that's a good way to go about it, right?
Let's make our life easier.
Right. All right, so if we adjust that last bullet point to be gather information necessary for drafting decisions of board actions for review by the chair and board and processing by building assistant, the chair and board and others as necessary. How does that sound? Let me say that whole thing. Gather information necessary for drafting decisions of board actions such as parentheses for review by the chair, the board, others as necessary, and processing by building assistant. Because we've said then in, under building assistant, that the building assistant processes in the decisions, which I think is all that posting stuff. Does that sound reasonable? Okay.
So. I mean, it sounds like we're gathering the information, someone's processing, I'm not sure who's making.
Well, we're leaving.
There's still a crevice between gathering and processing and I, and until we have a stronger sense of what that is.
We're leaving a loophole.
Yeah, but. Leaving ourselves open.
I mean, what we were working with from December 5th of 2011 had a whole lot of loopholes, so.
Sure, exactly. I think this is very, the clarity, the clarity that we're offering is as much clarity as we can do right now. And I, you know, I hear Ann Mary, I like, you know, and Denise is pointing out, absolutely. She and Annalee worked hard on this yearly report, which is a really important piece of information for the town and for us kind of moving forward, keeping them on. But that's a lot. Some years it's a whole lot.
So may I, may I ask about the previous bullet point then, again?
Andrea, the previous bullet point.
This is Andrea, I'm sorry. About the planet, about the annual town report. Is that still a clerk responsibility? And given that it wasn't done by the clinic this year, is that the appropriate place where it should be?
We had a transition.
Yeah, it was, it was because.
That was why, because?
We did it last year, the clerk didn't know they, you know, this year, so it.
This is.
We just went forward.
Not in place yet until we accept it, so.
Okay.
Another, correct. Another suggestion for that? People can do what they want to do, but my suggestion is, and I, I looked at how I asked Annalee did, she gave minutes for each month, each meeting, each month. So I looked at all of them, then I looked at last year's report and I looked at the way select board did it month by month. So I picked the highlights for each month and put it down. So it made it a lot easier. So I think that could be done month by month.
Thank you, yeah, so, good, yeah.
Well, because it was a lot of work at the end.
Absolutely. All right. So again, recognizing that there may be pieces, more pieces of this that will need to be adapted as we move forward. Are we comfortable with, I can call the question now and have a vote on this now and then we'll see where it lies. Okay, so Kathy Sylvester.
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Denise Mason.
Denise Mason, yes.
Andrea Leibson.
Andrea Leibson, yes, as long as the modifications are.
Yes, with the modifications, correct. And Mary Cludier?
And Mary Cludier, yes.
And Rachel Blaine.
Rachel Blaine, yes.
Thank you. I think that was an active and fun discussion. I think we do have some more potentially interesting discussions in the rest of our agenda. And so I will ask everyone if we can kind of slow down a bit and I'll try to recognize people as they vote. Jennifer?
Did you, did you just vote on this entire document or just that section?
The entire document.
Okay, so.
With two modifications. One.
There were other things, remember I told you Casey made notes?
Oh, no, but, well, so what are the additional suggestions?
Um, she didn't write it on here, but she did tell me about it under members, where it says all members shall appear at all times to the following. And it said the Deerfield Code of Conduct Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. So there are other conflict of interest law, there are other things like the sexual harassment, there's, there's a few other, so she listed. she listed, pardon me?
She wanted to add them?
Yes, but I was thinking, maybe we could write something that was a little bit more general about anything that go, you know?
To be honest, a list there would be super helpful. Um, because then, we all know what we need to check off as we go along, I think both Kathy Witroba and I got caught with our, like, without our, hmm, what was it, the, we, we've got it, but the disclosure of campaign resources, or whatever it was, like, there, that, that might be helpful to have that list.
So, it needs to be added, then, um, which I don't have a complete list, she just mentioned it on, when reading it the other day, what she did write on the last page, um, she wanted the second bullet on the last page, it says, process applications for special permit, and she wanted to write assist ATA for applications on special permit, stormwater permits. She wants me to be added there as, to assist her.
So she's assisting you in the processing?
Assisting the ATA with processing applications, is that how it would be?
Yeah, that's what she, she wanted to do.
Put, processing, planning board decisions in, in the ATA bucket.
Assist, yeah, that I, that, it says, she, I don't know, her, I mean, it's, it says that, assist ATA.
Right, but that means, that would move the processing to the ATA.
I think she wants me to help her with the...
So, it's that, so process, so under ATA, it would say, assist building assistant with processing. See what I'm saying, it's gotta sit one place and have the other person assist. You can't have two assists, you got one person pushing.
So I'm gonna assist her in doing them, so she'll do them, but then I'll help her and look at it before it goes any further.
So it's an assistant, it's a, and it's an addition to assistant town administrator. Okay, so this would be two additions, and one, we don't really have the full details on, which is, the members shall adhere to the following, and then the list of things that we have to do. Well, beginning on, sure, public records law, sure, conflict of interest law, but then we did the training, sexual, um, we do ethics training each year, all those, it's not a bad thing to list out. So you've kind of got it on your head that you know, it's everybody...
What we're talking about right here is that, under administrative assistant, it would say, assist building assistant with processing
Correct.
applications. And then, under building assistant, it says, process the applications, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So anything else, Jen?
Um...
So that's really the only suggestion here, since we don't have other specific, um...
Words, yeah.
Okay.
And then, she did list something else, but she's asking me if I want to do this, and I don't, so. We'll put it on the record, she just said that she want, she wanted to know if I wanted to post and distribute agendas to Deerfield Regulations in Massachusetts law to the board, and no, I think that it can stay with her, because...
Alright, so the only, potentially, we might have a new motion to add under assistant town administrator, a final bullet that would say, assist building assistant with processing applications for, and, and it would say processing applications, period.
Yeah.
So could I have a motion for that?
This is Andrea, um, I move that we accept that additional bullet point to assistant town administrators duties.
Thank you, Andrea.
Kathy Sylvester, second.
Thank you, Kathy, is there any further discussion? Alrighty, thank you, Kathy Sylvester?
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Denise Mason?
Denise Mason, yes.
Andrea Liebson?
Andrea Liebson, yes.
And Mary Cludier?
And Mary Cludier, yes.
And Rachel Blaine?
Rachel Blaine, yes.
Thank you, so that's passed. Okay. Alrighty. Moving on, just about where we were, we're going to be anyway. Yes, Denise?
When you revise that, can you send that out, because I just...
Absolutely.
Didn't, you know, just got too confusing.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, and then it would go in all of our binders as well, which is good. Alright, um, for the, um, planning board budget update, um, two bullet points under that revolving fund and the planner. A mention, just as an aside, uh, one of the things that I learned a little bit more about since our last meeting was, and maybe this is just an FYI to members of the planning board to, um, explain that we do have a revolving fund in the planning board, as I understand, these are um, funds that are collected from applications, site plan review, stormwater application, et cetera, um, in general, uh, that money can be used for either overages that potentially we might have had during the fiscal year, or, um, possibly also, uh, if, uh, an applicant has, um, signed approval for, say, something like peer review, but we haven't yet had the transaction of those funds, we could start the, um, peer review process with, um, footing the bill, and then, um, the applicant would pay us back. So we, so we would have, um, some funds that are still, we, we need to have some funds necessary, right now we have about 12,000 in our revolving fund plan, our revolving fund, there's no plans at this point to, um, tap into that, but FYI, that's something that we have a bank account that maybe some people didn't know we had. Jennifer?
I have a plan for it.
Pardon me? Oh, well, I, we might be talking about that in a minute, under the planner. Is that okay?
Yep.
Thank you. Um, so the next piece, um, we, we did have our, um, survey of planning board members, and, uh, in terms of priorities for the coming year, or priorities going forward, and, um, strong on the list was, um, hiring a planner. Um, it was interesting as, um, in particular, I was talking with Julie Chaffin, she says, what does planner do? And I thought, well, that's a really good question, so I, um, went about, um, uh, interviewing towns, and Jen, help me here, because I'm...
Where's your documents, so, is it, where do you keep them on your computer? Your PowerPoint?
It's in my Google Drive.
Okay, so go to your Gmail button is the second one.
Here we go, here we go, okay. So, um, there we are for full screen, and how can I get rid of all this, I can't, or just down here?
No, we need to see each other.
This?
Perfect.
This? Here's people's faces.
Can you just click your next button, like your arrow?
Thank you. Move that far away. Okay, now we're set.
But then, she's, they're still up there.
Huh.
They're all up there. Do I have to touch the screen on the big screen, Jen, to get rid of that?
To get rid of what? We see it perfectly.
Okay. Miss you what I'm seeing.
Yep.
Yeah.
Can you see, you can see the whole screen?
Yes, great, perfect.
Because here in Town Hall, we just see, it's, some of it's cut off. So in any event, um, so, here we go, if you, if they're with me, and the, um, the goal with this is to inform you of, or share with all of you and others, uh, what I found out from talking with, uh, planners in eight surrounding towns, and also, um, potentially think of how we might be able to lobby for some additional planning assistance here in Deerfield, so that will be the discussion potentially after the presentation. Um, why? There we go. Um, so these are the uh, eight towns that we looked at, you can see that, uh, the town population ranged from 1,600 to 17,000, quite a, quite a range, and the, um, the type of planning assistance, um, ranged from essentially using, um, organizations such as Furcog, Franklin Regional Planning Board, Pioneer Valley Planning, um, Commission, as well as having assistant town planners who are, um, often bachelor's trained, um, people, and then also, um, actually directors of planning, who do have certification from, uh, the AICP, American Institute of Professional Certified Planners, I guess it's called. Um, no, no surprise, um, here in Deerfield, um, we're pretty big in relation to all the towns in, in Franklin County, but um, our, our volunteers and staff, overburdened staff, really essentially do all the the, the work in relation to, um, official planning assistance. Back to, uh, Julie's question of what are the, you know, what are, what does a planner do? Um, I do have a number of planning, um, job descriptions that people have sent to me, but, um, yeah, sometimes those can be kind of dry, so it's good to note that almost all the planners mentioned the degree to which an, a professional planner can relieve burdens of both staff and the boards. And, um, when they talk about facilitating economic development, it's not necessarily going out and beating the bushes and trying to find businesses to come to town, the, the primary way that that occurs is by making sure that zoning bylaws are, um, are appropriate and appropriate in relation to town vision, as mentioned in plans, as well as, um, that the processes, the applications, the, the timed frames for the applications, that, that those are, are easy for potential businesses when they, when they wanna come to Deerfield. Um, and certainly, almost all of the towns talked about the degree to which, uh, legal can be an important concern, as well as expense, um, especially if there isn't professional planning within the towns. Um, most of the towns, certainly the towns that had the professional planners, um, they write and administer the grants, if in those situations where grants allow grant administration, sometimes they don't. It's important to note that planners assist all, or assist boards, it's not just the planning board, they assist the select board, the ZBA, and even energy committee, as mentioned, assisting advisory committees, um, with bylaws and work to promote the town visions. Um, and also too, um, planners are very much involved with looking at the town plans, those are really one of our best ways to know what our, uh, residents want, and so, you know, unfortunately, our master plan from 2001, our complete streets, and our Heisman Housing Production from 2011, whatnot, um, are a bit challenging for us right now, but planners can make sure that those plans are, are also implemented, as well as just, not just written. Irving was one of the first towns that I looked at, um, certainly small, but they have a very dynamic young planner, and I'll say as an aside, it was really interesting to me how much all these planners love their jobs, they just love their jobs. This was very exciting. Um, they, um, definitely, you know, with moving projects forward, writing grants, um, Irving was kind of cool, because in her, what, 18 months on the job, um, she's written or received a million and a half in grants, in fact, they just did receive a $60,000 one-stop grant for revising their bylaws, something near and dear, I know, to Jen's heart. Um, they also, right now, Irving, I guess, is so excited about the grant opportunities, because there are also so many grant opportunities out there, that, um, she's working now with their finance committee to actually create a line item for, uh, matching funds. Otherwise, if there's not a line item, then, um, matching funds need to go through town meeting, or a special town meeting, and that can slow down the whole grant application process, so that seemed like a really nice, uh, proactive idea. Um, she was the first among many of the towns who said, oh wow, you know, Deerfield, you guys are so busy. You, you got a lot more going on than, than we in the smaller towns, um, and, uh, you know, it can really be great having a planner. Um, she did mention that, um, the degree to which a planner can take work off of people's plates and give people a chance to catch up, um, that's really tied in a lot to, um, setting clear expectations. Uh, she said that that was obviously very important, that at the beginning especially, um, set the clear expectations as to what the planner's going to be doing, whether, and, and if it has to do with, let's just take care of the work we got going on right now, then, you know, we'll hold off on some of the grants. Obvious, but good to, to notice. The Montague Town Planner also, um, very dynamic, he, he talked about, he goes wherever he's needed. You know, be it, uh, with the industrial corporation, we don't hear too much about our industrial corporation, or at least here on the planning board, I haven't heard too much about it, but um, the Conscom, the, you know, the, the, the planning board, um, wherever he's needed, he, he's out there. Um, and again, he talked about how implementing the town plans was so important, he says his town plans are on his desk, they're dog-eared, he's just looking at them all the time. Um, and that he also just more than pays for himself in his grants, usually it's 250 to 500,000 a year, sometimes up to 2 million and beyond. Um, and, um, especially, you know, here Deerfield, we are in a position of definitely expanding our capacity, we're expanding lots of things right now, and he, he was certainly saying, whoa, if you wanna be proactive and, and move forward, you really need a planner to help you do that. Uh, the town planner in orange is eligible for his, uh, his, uh, certification. Um, he also really talked about being out in the community, and one of the questions I was asking all of these folks were, how do you, how do you find, get community engagement, how do you find out what the community really wants, and, yeah, I'm not sure this is quite the case, but he says, everybody knows my face. Uh, he's, he's out there, he says he's out at, to, at the, at the local drugstore passing out leaflets and information papers, um, and flyers, uh, he comes to many, many different board meetings, um, at schools, in the senior center, et cetera. Um, and they also had an interesting idea, he said, um, they could, really could almost not do without their senior work-off program. Um, they allow, or they've, um, uh, put forward a situation where seniors can work up to 100 hours a year, um, get a reduction of their taxes, their property taxes for 1,200, so that's basically what, 12 bucks an hour? And he said, he couldn't imagine working without his, their, their senior work-off volunteers, they usually have two at any given town, and that it was an incredible benefit to the town. Um, he recently got a $75,000 grant to revise their master plan. Um, and you may have noticed in the recorder last week, um, they had, it was on a front page, actually, um, they received a $6,000 Delta Grant from Furcog, that's the district local technical assistance grant, and a $24,000 state grant to update their housing production plan. Um, so, um, yet again, you know, the plans are really important in helping guiding, guide the planners' activities. I have to say, as an aside, too, Kathy was extremely, uh, instrumental in the PowerPoint, so we have, we can, we can thank Kathy for these wonderful bullets. Um, Conway, um, they spoke specifically of how much they use, um, legal, and the expense, uh, that is used, that they, that they have going towards legal, and although Furcog and Franklin Regional Planning Board assists them, um, there are many other areas where, um, the issues coming before the planning board are becoming so complex and so complicated, um, but they really feel like they need professional help, and that that professional help potentially could, um, reduce some of their legal expenses. Um, they also just received a Furcog Delta Grant to up, update just one chapter of their master plan, but that's a way to get started, is one chapter at a time. Uh, Whately, um, they have a community development administrator, she's someone who has her bachelor's, uh, she reports to the town administrator, and very clear... She reports to the town administrator and very clearly is working to assist the town administrator, deal with all of the various projects that are on the town's plate and trying to move them forward. It was interesting, I talked with her about where does she sit? Because I know that that's an issue for all of us. And she said she, yeah, I mean, she does have a place to put her computer, but that she's remote, she's out there where she's needed. And she gave us an example. If it's sewer water, public works, you know, they're doing the physical work and she's doing the paperwork. So she's, she's, she's all over, not just sitting at one place in town hall. Hatfield, this was interesting because they also very concerned with the increasing complexity of projects and the planning board chair in Hatfield is approaching her planning board or her finance committee for the third time, third year in a row, to request monies for planning assistance. And she said, hey, you know, could, could Deerfield share a planner with us? She's going to probably be looking for thirteen thousand five hundred. Have a little bit more about that in a minute. Sunderland, there's a story here that I don't quite understand. They don't do very much with zoning changes. Maybe they're just spit clean and perfect. I don't know. They also, they don't appear to budget anything for planning or budget much for, much for planning. If they feel that they need assistance, they'll go to Furcog for the Delta Grants. And actually, I did speak with Adam Sokolowski, our, our ZBA Chair, and he suggested, wow, could, could we have something similar to a collaboration that we have with South County EMS, which works so well? Sunderland, no, thank you. Oh, no, thank you. Greenfield, our town's, our county seat, certainly not a different, you know, a different scope than, than Deerfield. But one of the things that was interesting from Greenfield, they said, right now, they only have one point five planners in their department, but sometimes they're up to seven. And what they do is they'll get going on different projects. Those projects start to take on a life of their own, and then they get peeled off from the planning department and take care of themselves. So that was, that was nice to hear. Flexibility there. The strongest theme certainly that came through, a lot of feelings at Deerfield, there's we have a reputation out there. We're, we're, we're busy. We're a busy town. We all know that, right? Jen says, yeah, yeah, we're a busy town. And you've got so much going on, you really need a planner. Definitely a theme that legal costs either can skyrocket because of problems. If you don't have a professional planning assistance or conversely, that legal costs can decrease with planning assistance. All of the places, all of the towns were mentioning how much money there is out there. But again, back to capacity conversations. You can't just write a grant and then, what do we do with it? And so that's where the planners can help with providing assistance to the staff to, to make sure that grants that are written actually are implemented and move forward. Question, questions for Deerfield as Jen, Jen, well, we've had some conversations last, if any of you were on the finance committee meeting last week, Jen and Casey and Carolyn at that meeting, and then I know at other select board meetings, Trevor and Dave have also been very supportive of getting some planning assistance for Deerfield. Of course, it all comes down to money. And as Denise can attest at a select board meeting immediately prior to our meeting tonight, as there was much discussion about grants that are being sought and, you know, how are we going to have the capacity to to help all this, these wonderful visions go forward? Certainly, one planner can't do that, but a planner could certainly help. For contracted services, the proposal that's out there right now in contracted services is for ten thousand dollars for a planner. That ends up being about ten hours a month or a couple hours a week. Interestingly, I mean, when you really look at it, it's not really ten thousand a month because right now we have some additional consultation money in our planning budget. So our planning budget would be reduced by five K. And so our net expense to the town would be about five K. Which is, everything's relative. I mean, right now, again, the meeting that Denise was just part of, the, our, our town budget is going to be very challenging this year. They have requested level funding and so that's the need for us to have maybe some discussion on how can we lobby for some more professional assistance? If we did get or, or part of the hope with the contracted services is that maybe they could help with one or two zoning bylaw proposals a year, attend some meetings of some of the boards and whatnot, potentially start review of our zoning bylaws. And definitely really determine what needs might be for an official FY twenty-four full-blown planner proposal. Hatfield. They're looking for, well, that, whether or not we could split a halftime position with them. Now, this is of course assuming that we could even find someone. Right now Furcog has two planning positions that are available and full-time planners and they're apprehensive that they'll be able to do anything with filling those. So, but you never know, you don't, and you don't know, tell you, you try. So if, if, if Hatfield were to get approved for thirteen thousand in their budget and that, that, that would be one quarter of, of a planner. So we could add our additional eight K plus the five that was in our budget otherwise and, and get basically ten hours a week instead of ten hours a month. Certainly, in that situation, the duties could be, as stated above, although more possible, as well as writing and administering some grants, helping to work on streamlining our application processes and also implementing miscellaneous projects. Jen had mentioned a question of whether or not our contracted services, Jen can fill in a little bit, but they've had some conversations with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and apparently there is someone that could be available for us, starting at the beginning of next fiscal year. And then a question is whether or not there might be some assistance this year, which could tie into those revolving funds. So there we are with what's going on, at least in in some conversations with eight towns in our surrounding areas. Certainly it's a step in the right direction. The question is, you know, how can we help something happen this year? So I'll be quiet now and maybe people can raise their hands and have comments or suggestions or ideas on how can we get a planner for Deerfield? Yes, Denise?
My first observation, I don't know what every, you know, I don't know a whole lot about all the other towns, but I know that it's probably not a level playing field. You know, I don't know if other towns need to have a whole new sewer. I don't know what other towns are going for. So I, so I think, you know, we can't, we certainly can't compare Deerfield to other towns. I know that Montague has a planner and they also have a grant writer. So, and I guess that was my question. So are you talking about having a planner slash grant writer position?
You know, that could be determined. I think right now in the contracted services, there is a request for a grant writer and the planner. And I think, you know, as if both of those positions come to fruition, there would be figuring that out. You know, I think if the grant writer is able to zip quick with writing glance, there certainly is enough other things going on with the planning board to help with implementing projects, so.
I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure whether they're necessarily the same skill set.
Oh, well, you know, I, yes, we had that conversation with, with Furcog and at one point they said, no, it's not the same skill set. But then as I'm calling around to all these other towns, definitely the planners are seeming to write the grant. So maybe it's just the way it's set up in the individual towns. I, I'm not certain, but I, I do believe that. I mean, in my own experience, I did years too, that grant writers are pretty special and planners who are working with zoning bylaws have their own skill sets, so.
When you, when you speak, I can hear you. It's just not very loudly. And Rachel has her hand raised.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm waiting. And, and I, I thank you. I wanted to say, this is a fantastic presentation, just by the way, and great research. And I would say also just to the grant writer issue, people can write grant writers who aren't grants, who aren't grant writers. What you do end up is with a less, less skilled grant writer potentially. So I, I put that out there too, that, that's that's just, that can be the same person, just different skills within the same person. When did Montague, how old is Montague's town plan?
You go, you continue and ask your other questions and I'll be able to answer that.
Okay, because I, well, I guess my point is too, that that would be part of, and Denise, I, I, I'm curious with the, the, your new, the committee that you chair, that this doesn't seem really like right in that wheelhouse, like coordinating the, the efforts of different committees and departments. So I, I kind of think that that would be something to look at. This would be a great presentation for that committee as well. Just because of the overlap, obviously with finance, obviously with select board, but also with the the, the group, the group that you chair. And then just my last piece on this one is that when you say that some, like a town like Conway, they, and since we did have a Pat Smith who was not a planner, but, but tremendous support. And, you know, we talked about this with the Buckland's presentation for their ADUs, that they had tremendous support from the Furcog, which was a contracted service in Buckland, not a planner, but actually contracted services. That, is that what, is that what Conway has as well? They contract per, with each project, for example?
Yes.
With a Furcog or with a, they also work with a Pioneer Valley Consortium?
Yes, yes. And Montague's master plan is nineteen ninety-nine. So they're two years older than we are.
So, yeah, okay, interesting.
Oh, here, yes, I can stop share. That makes more sense. And Jennifer?
So talking to Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and seeing what they had to offer seems, having the money in the contracted services to pay for this seems very reasonable at the moment before versus hiring a position in the town and paying all of the health insurance and everything that's above and beyond like a, a full-time employee. Sharing it, I, I feel is, is challenging because that person needs to know both towns bylaws and situations and, and have them very clear vision on the two separate towns. I mean, that's just my opinion that it would be, you want somebody to really immerse themselves in what Deerfield has planned and to be very clear and focused and be able to make those meetings.
So that a consultant does too, though.
Sorry?
A consultant does that too. A consultant has one consultancy and one consultancy and they learn.
Yeah, but to pay for one, like, like you're, you're paying one person to do two versus just picking and choosing. And I don't know, I mean.
Well, I'll also say that Hatfield is very rudimentary right now. You know, they're in
I don't, I don't know. I really talking to Catherine Rattay, who is the director at PVPC, and, you know, they have a senior planner that would help in a lot of the areas. And I mean, it's also like, we do it for a year. If it doesn't work out, then we don't have to contract again. Or we can go a different avenue. It, so something happened today and I didn't even have a chance to tell anybody. So we had somebody just stop into town hall and Bob Walden wasn't there and wanted, and this is a perfect example to show, you know, to, to tell the planning board tonight. So they want to open a business in town and they gave me the address. So I said, hold on a second. Let me check to see what zone it's in and see if it's okay. So then I go to the use chart in our zoning bylaw. We don't have it was Chinese bodywork, basically. It's not massage. It's not acupuncture. But we don't even have anything in that type of category. You know, so I was thinking, you know, is it like a spa? Is it like a salon? Is it, you know, yeah, now we don't have that. And so then, you know, I called Bob because he wasn't in the office and I'm like, where would you put this? And I just think that this is a really good example of if we had a bylaw review of somebody that could really find comb it and, and add a whole lot of things to this bylaw to make it so that we have a place to put businesses like this and add a category. And we're not, because basically we have to find a different category that closely fits it. So like, the only thing I could find that was sort of like medical, like that would be, you know, close to it. And, but then because I've, I've done this before, if the change of use has been within two years, you can keep that use. And so guess what the business was? It was acupuncture. So the, the place that this business wants to go into was an acupuncture, acupuncture place up until February of twenty twenty-two. So you can go in there because it's a similar use and all you need to do is make sure that it meets your state requirements for your use and, and building code, you know, so Bob would check that out and get a sign permit and and it wouldn't need a special permit or wouldn't need any other. But, so that just worked out for this business. However, that's something that I, I've found to be challenging with our bylaw. And which brings me circles back around that if we have this money in a revolving fund and they have the availability in this fiscal year, whether we start with some of those funds to try to have a review of our bylaw in this fiscal year before, if, you know, we, we'll see if we'll get the money or not to have, to hire PVPC for contracted services to work on the other planning details in next fiscal year. It may be worthwhile.
Yes, I think, I mean, I think that if we do have opportunity to have some planning, then certainly we need to want to be a fun challenge to figure out what the priorities are. I mean, as we saw though, you know, which was the town that had sixty thousand to redo their, review their whole bylaws. So clearly looking at our bylaws is going to be quite, that would more than take up the whole budget.
Right.
But, you know, could be, that could be the priority that we all town legalists decide on. Other thoughts and especially thoughts in relation, well, I mean, if we have to know what we would be lobbying for, but I mean, at this point, what we would be lobbying for is we, there's a proposal for ten K, which is really just five K in the fiscal year budget. And actually, at the finance committee meeting, they put off making a vote on it. They wanted to see all the rest of the proposals and then they're just going to start chopping stuff away. So you know, I mean, at least we've got something in there. But yes, Andrea.
So this is Andrea. My concern is bringing more money into town to help fund all kinds of things that we want to accomplish. That, in my humble opinion, requires grant writing. I know that my work on the Open Space Committee has shown me two grants already, one we missed completely. One of which we could apply for only if we complete the whole survey. and, um, and the plan that would come from that. So, and where was it that, that she, they brought in one point two million dollars, one point five million dollars? I mean, we've got to find money outside of town. And, um, I think that focusing on someone who can write and implement and help plan monies that we can get from other places is a very high priority.
Well, I think you've mentioned two things, one is writing and one is implementing and.
And, and administration, that's why I don't think it can be, that's why I think it's concerning that we hire a grant writer. That's great, but they won't, they won't be there for the administration and.
I, I believe, Jen, do you know, is it ten K that is being asked for also for a grant writer? There is a additional grant writer in the contracted services request also, right?
So what they did is they clumped a grant writer with the MVP. So they put it together, so I think it's twenty-five thousand, that's in the grant writer and ten thousand that's in, for the contracted services for a planner. Now, there's a separate amount, that's the planning board money that they've reduced. But that also covers your mailings and your workshops and, you know, all of the things that, that are the planning board. So that's, that's separate.
Right, so if I, if I'm summarizing correctly, right now in the planning board budget, there's two grand for those mailings and workshops and whatnot. There, there is a ten thousand dollar request for planning contracted services and then you're saying twenty-five thousand for a grant writer?
So they're separate, you have your planning board budget.
Correct.
And then you have your contracted services, yeah.
Correct.
I mean.
Contracted services, they're looking, there's a request for ten K for planning assistance or.
Right, yeah, right.
Planning contract services.
So the twenty-five thousand is also for, um, there's like a grant writer that, that they were hiring, um. Denise, do you remember who, the woman that, um?
We've hired a grant writer, um, to do the community one-stop and that is to get, I mean, yeah, to access money for the, um, hopefully new municipal building.
Right, and it's also to continue some of the MVP with, um, Chris Curtis. So I wanted to be careful that it was not all like, okay, now you have twenty-five thousand dollars that are just going to MVP, you know, and that's not the case.
So can I ask, can monies be pooled from the different areas to, um, have someone who is a grant writer do things for complete, for, for ver- various projects, not just, you know, a grant writer for this and a grant writer for a different, so, someone who understood the town and understood maybe the town plan, then it would make more sense to have one person writing grants in a variety of areas. And then you also gain expertise because you don't have to keep learning what's going on in town. It's a, yeah, economy of scale.
Maybe we can keep the grant writing, um.
Yeah, my, my contention is it needs to be part of it because we need more money.
But it not part of our.
No, that's what I was trying to say, it's in contracted services, which is a, a separate, but you're, you're right, we do need that. But above and beyond, which is the purview of the planning board and having the planner, is unless we change our bylaws to encourage economic development and, um, mold the town with our bylaw, that's to bring, to bring money and then to have grants to write to make those things happen. It's like, we're, we're working like in a backwards way. Because we have to change our bylaw to have mixed-use buildings and have it, and really look at our map and really look at where we wanna have growth and where we, we don't and what needs to happen. And it really starts with the bylaw. It's, it's hard to then, as administrative part of it, is to then rush to make a decision. Okay, now we gotta go to the select board, we go quick to the planning board, then we gotta bring it to town meeting and we gotta vote. And that's, then people feel like they're getting the wool put over their eyes and like things are being rushed, um, through a process. Whereas if we had it reviewed and had a clearer path, I think it would be beneficial for everybody.
Yeah, I think it's hard to know which is the chicken and which is the egg. Do we try to lobby for consulting assistance at our contracted services as is proposed right now? And then we determine what the priorities would be? Or do we lobby for those contracted services with a specific goal in mind? I mean, I, I think we all are in agreement from our own reading of the, of our zoning bylaws that there, uh, there's a lot of areas that can be updated. Uh, I certainly fear that, you know, for seven, for ten, for ten K or even a little bit this year, that's gonna be a drop in the bucket for what is needed for looking at our zoning bylaws. And in the meantime, then we would have nothing for the planning board for the rest of the year. So, Jen?
Well, what about using some of the revolving fund to start looking at areas of the bylaw in this fiscal year? And then if we do get the ten thousand, that would help with, you know, other duties and you know, process this.
And it, I think that's a good idea, again, um, you know, which was the town that just got a grant of sixty grand to redo their bylaws. So, you know, for us to have five K to, uh, to look at this year, I'm not sure, Denise?
I think through the community one-stop funding and they did that, this is the second year in community one-stops. I think that, that's where they got the money from. And you can only apply for one project per year, we already do, but, but that's great.
About sixty K.
Yeah, I know, that's huge.
Well, I mean, so how do we, how, I mean, if in fact, right now, the finance committee is meeting and they're going through all of the budget requests and then they're going to start, um, saying yay and nay. Um, and then they, I mean, they still can say yay and nay and it still can come before town meeting. So I'm just wondering about, um, certainly having planning assistance, however, wherever it's, put is, um, strongly supported by the planning board and the select board and the, you know, uh, many other folks. But, you know, it's, it's all gonna come down to the priority list and how can, can, does anyone have any ideas on how we might be able to, to lobby? I mean, I don't think we can make this, you know, this is too long of a presentation for the finance committee or for town meeting or for the select board, we could tell them to come tune into this YouTube, but, I mean, we wanna get something, right? We wanna get something and.
So.
Yes, Denise?
So Jen, okay, what, what, what services can Pioneer Valley Planning Commission give us and to what, I mean, what's the cost?
So I have a, a little brochure that they, um, sent to me and it says, so examples of planning board assistance, review and comment of adequacy of existing zoning ordinances and bylaws of subdivision regulations. Review zoning ordinances and bylaws for consistency with state law. Creating, developing, review intake and tracking systems. Assist in redrafting and updating zoning ordinance and bylaws or subdivision regulations. Updates on planning board requirements and responsibilities. Assistance in implementing smart growth tools and strategies. Access to key content via telephone, email, scheduled meetings or guidance and advice. Attendance at planning board meetings. Assistance in reviewing meeting agendas and meeting minutes. Training for planning board, Board of Appeals. Guidance concerning planning principles and planning law. Interpretation of local ordinances, bylaws and regulations. General municipal planning functions, so those are some of them.
Right, I mean, it's a wonderful menu and wouldn't we love to pick from that? But for two hours a week.
For two hours a week?
For ten grand, that's what, that's what, two and a half hours a week, ten grand comes down to, to, at, at their hourly rate, comes down to ten hours a month.
If we were hiring them now, well, that's right, you said, you're not sure whether they would be available now?
No, they said to me that he is, the, the senior planner is available this fiscal year. We would contract him for next fiscal year. I was considering asking the planning board if they would consider using some of the revolving fund of the twelve thousand dollars to jumpstart on our zoning bylaw, to start looking at our use chart, to start looking at things this fiscal year. And using some of those funds before, I mean, we haven't, we have to wait for town meeting, we have to decide. If, if that gets off the chopping block, then it's off the table completely. So, but using some of that revolving fund.
Well, Jen, would it be possible for you to have a conversation with them? I mean, this is kind of like, there's two different things that we're talking about, if we're talking about the revolving fund. Um, recognizing that reviewing our bylaws is a huge top, challenge. What could they suggest that they could do for us for twenty hours? You know, what, what could they do? And could they, could you have them report back to us what they think they could do in relation to our bylaws?
Sure, I mean, I reached out to her last week and sent an email just seeing if what they were, what their availability was this year. Because that's what she said in our first phone call, so I was like, what is your availability? Um, and what, what could you do in this fiscal year? She, uh, hasn't responded, so I called today knowing we were having this meeting tonight and just left another message saying, hi, it's me again. So, um, I haven't heard, I haven't heard back from her. So, you know, I would, I would invite them, either the senior planner or, or the director to come to one of our meetings. And if that's the case, then you guys can ask questions and see sort of what their purview is and what, um, what it is that they think that they could provide for us.
Okay.
Um, you know, so.
Well, if you could continue, I think if you could continue pers- pursuing what, how might they approach this really big job for us? And then, so that's sort of on, on this part of the table. And on this, the other side, part of the table is, again, we've got ten K that we're requesting, but right now it's really only five K net.
Well, the other thing is, right, just occurred to me was maybe we use some of that money to be, for, for hiring their planner to find us a grant to redo our zoning bylaw. So if we spend the money with them writing and implementing a grant to, you know, that's much larger.
Again, I, I think that's, actually, that's a great idea and we could check with them about that. Um, that would be a great idea, but in the meantime, what do we do about trying to lobby with the finance committee for the money that we're proposing right now? Because the state of the Deerfield budget is such that we're gonna have to really get either a lot of people, a lot of voices and a, well, and probably a really strong case, or it's gonna be off the table real quick.
Well, contracted services has already been voted and, um, approved. Yeah, they voted it.
Well, last year or last week, Julie said she wanted to put that to the side until she saw all the rest of the, um, maybe it was just the planning part, I don't know, the contracted services part, but she said she put it aside until she heard all, they heard all the rest of the proposals.
Okay, I left my book at work, so I don't have it.
So this is why, and this is where, yeah, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Well, my question is, I guess, is that this is where our priorities and this list of priorities, which just for me feels like everything, is so functionally important, uh, because we've just made some zoning, uh, decisions, um, about relative to, um, entertainment and, you know, changing uses for that part of town. And we really need to go back at that. Uh, that was, uh, uh, even in the formation of it, we said we need to come back to this because this bylaw is now needs cleaning up. We created one that is really raggedy and, you know, we, we, it looks highly like spot zoning and we made a good case for it not to be because we would come back to it. So there's just one right there that we made a promise to do in terms of, but, was I, uh, zoning review. We, we made this promise already as we were plan, approving the la- that, that change, that bylaw change. A- and then the ADU, which we put forward, you know, a proposal and we didn't bring it all the way in because we didn't feel like we had enough understanding of what we were presenting and we didn't have enough community buy-in. That's another thing that's been, and that we've talked about here. So we've got, we've got, let's say, three strong proposals in terms of what, um, what we, what, what we want to accomplish. I think that that's the, the case that we make relative to, for instance, bylaw changes. Uh, you know, bylaw cleanup, bylaw review, if you will. So it, right there, that's, that's ten hours a month. And that's not even writing our decisions, which is what, another thing I was, I'm gonna go back to that. But, you know, support with writing decisions, it, this was, this is something that we've been working on.
Well, some, sometimes when proposals are brought forward to different bodies, um, we, people try to get, you know, letters of support from influential people. Should we try to get that and send it to the finance committee? What are other ideas to try to encourage the finance committee to support our, at least the ten grand or five K really contracted services? Denise?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, I'm, I'm not really clear on that and I, I thought Jen just said that we have ten thousand dollars.
No.
We don't.
It's in, it's, ten thousand dollars is proposed. But they haven't, I mean.
If a revolving fund is what I'm saying is available.
Right, right, and that's twelve K, but.
Well, okay, so I think Rachel made a really good point. We do have three bylaws that I think need to be taken, you know, we should take a look at them. And I'd be, I think we should use Pioneer, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to do that. And I, you know, I, you know, you're talking about the chicken and the egg. I think that we have issues already because of the bylaws and I think we have, because the fifty-foot frontage, that issue. And a lot of pushback because of that. It's hard to, hard to move forward and that may take a while. So I'm in favor of really working on the bylaws. Um, as far as grant writers are concerned, um, you know, currently we do have a grant writer who's doing one. We also found, we are doing, um, a project that's going to be crosswalks in front of Frontier and then in front of the propos- the park. And, um, we got the fur cog to work and then I keep forgetting the consulting firm. But it's to no cost to us, which is really great because they were working under a foundation. So, you know, I think little by little and then we're also, I was working, the meeting before this one, I was working with the select board to come up with, we already have a whole list of everything that we're working on through CCI. And so we just had a meeting to prioritize our ask, um, for support for Joe Comaford and Natalie and hopefully, um, Jim McGovern at some point. So we're asking, there's a lot of money that's coming into the state and, you know, we, we basically want a piece of that.
And how do we, how would we get such money?
Wait a second, that's a little bit of agenda.
It, it, it is, but it all ties in. So I think, you know, Andrew's talking about grant writer, I know, we need a grant writer, we need a planner, we need all of this, but we also need our bylaws.
A little bit of a parallel track here, just a moment, Jen, is, um, I mean, we've got the question of how to, convince the finance committee at this point to support five K extra for contracted services for a planner. So a parallel track, which is also on our agenda with our planning board priorities. We had talked about a question as, as has been mentioned here with, um, looking at our different housing initiatives and in particular, certainly one of the first ones, as Rachel was just saying, the accessory apartment proposal. Um, we do still have money budgeted through Chris Curtis for the accessory apartment bylaw, which is probably eighty, eighty-five, ninety percent there. Part of what Chris was, Chris and I had a conversation, we're thinking about whether or not we could get a working, a working group, a couple of planning board members, maybe someone from the ZBA, the finance committee, the select board, to basically advise the planning board and on, what are some of the issues with our proposed accessory apartment bylaw right now? And then bring those, um, comments back to the planning board for us then to, um, rework our accessory bylaw. Rework our accessory bylaw, and whether or not we could bring it to the April town meeting. I'm not sure if that would be too soon or not, but in any event. What I'm thinking about with the accessory apartment bylaw is that we're pretty far along with that right now. And one of the things we keep talking about, or I certainly keep talking about is public engagement, and how do we really know what the community wants? And if we're able to bring some, bring the accessory apartments forward, and it comes to a town meeting, be it in the spring or the fall. And we'll see what the community wants before we go forward with upzoning town center, or looking at multifamilies, or. I don't know, whatever else we'd be looking at. So that's kind of the parallel track, and I hesitate to say that because it's. We're. Putting two, two things out there. I mean, maybe what we're talking about as we. Move forward with the contracted services is. I don't know, trying to, I don't know. Trying to get people to write letters. I don't know. You know, I mean, it's writing letters in a vacuum. Many, many different town budgets have a lot of needs, and it appears that our town budget this year is really, really tight. So. So.
Well, we, we, in, in the meeting that I was just at, which is, you know, public select word meeting. And I'm not sure that's good. I think Casey was going to check on that tomorrow, but supposedly. I think sixty-seven more students from Frontier are signed up to go to the tech school. Which we found, I mean, found like, oh my God, that's a huge amount of students in one year. But maybe because, you know, people are looking for trades instead of just going to college, which is probably a good idea for a lot. But that also adds to the tune of more than two hundred thousand dollars to that budget. So, you know, we're getting hit from all directions, unfortunately.
Jen, do you have any suggestions for how we can lobby to get some money to move forward with planning assistance? What is your sort of just off cuff suggestion?
Well. I was thinking, because I wrote in my book that they passed it five dash zero dash two, like five people. You know, I was looking at our contracted service for finance committee. And so, so that's what, that's what I thought. And so I asked. Casey, I said, did they approve it? And they approved the recommendation for town meeting for, for that contracted services budget. However, that doesn't mean they're not going to go back and cut every, you know, show, once they have everything. And they are looking at the whole picture, they will go back and then. Starts, you know, cutting.
So again, do you have any, do you have any suggestions from your inside info? Of how we might be able to speak, I mean, because especially at, at the finance committee meetings, I mean, they're fairly quick. It's not like, you know, if I were to speak, it'd be two minutes and.
Yeah, I mean, I, I really liked your presentation that you gave. It is too long. If we could, you know, can, you know, make it much shorter. Or do a. One sheet that we could, you know, summarize a lot of ideas. And, you know, this would be something that if it, if it makes it to the town meeting floor and we don't get. Slash, then it's just doing a flyer for the community to show how important it is for all different areas. You know, I think that's where we would want to promote, to support it in a, you know, in a way that the community would see. How many different areas that having a planner would hit. It wouldn't just be. A single vision.
Paraphrase that we could potentially have a one pager that is sort of snazzy. That could go to the, the finance committee, select board, all the people, all the decision makers. And the finance committee will or won't ultimately recommend it for town meeting. But then we might pass out that flyer also at town meeting, so that if. If we've kind of done our job, maybe the residents would vote for it.
Yeah, I really think that the people would, if it makes it that far that we're going to have that money, I think that the people would see that this is a necessity. I mean, we've even seen Julie, you know, was Julie was very for it when, when, you know, the board was speaking about it. About contracted services and, and, and the need for it. And. I think if it, if it isn't one of those. You know, it, there's, there's so many areas that we're looking at. We're so overburdened financially. That, you know, we have to just see, because like you were talking, I mean, like we have to, our wastewater treatment plant. And, you know, like all, there's some of these major things that the town is addressing. And.
This is level funding though, isn't it? The ten thousand dollars for contracted services. Haven't used it.
No, no, it's, we're up eighteen point two four percent in contracted services.
As a town.
As a town. Huh? That's not in the planning board.
Right, no, I appreciate that, but I'm just saying. Well, anyway.
Well, part of that is grant writer, part of that is, I mean, it says ten K for planning, even though it nets against our planning budget in a different part of the budget.
Right. It's like, you know. It's.
Well, this is, I think this is a good direction, certainly for the finance committee meetings. Is there anybody who would like to work on this? Fire with me. Ah, Rachel, okay. Excellent. Thank you, Rachel. You can work on the flyer. And then there's a question. There is the question of having a, a working group that might just be one or two meetings, maybe not too many more than that. On the accessory apartments also. I've made the offer to Denise, Denise and Jen and Andrea. We're going to be working on our fee schedule, which I know is low on Jennifer's list of priorities. But we're trying to scratch away at some of these things. So Denise is more than up to her eyebrows. With CCI right now. So I'm wondering if someone might take on working with Andrea.
This is with ADU?
Revise this, the fee schedule.
Oh, the fee schedule, oh.
Jen, aren't, weren't we pretty close at that? Yeah, I thought we were very close at that last meeting. I'm not sure that we need another. We just need someone to, we need a couple other towns information, I think, and then we would be good. I'll send you an email tomorrow.
Andrea can spearhead that with Jen and maybe Sue Brulet can do some.
Some research, and then we can just see, you know, where we can go up where it doesn't feel like it's burdening people. But yet, you know, we can increase just because of our time and staff.
I mean, it's, it's, it isn't a burden if it's paying for the services.
Right. I am on vacation Wednesday, Thursday, Friday this week, so. You'll get my out of office.
And then if we, if we could have a working group to, maybe a couple of people on the planning board, and we'll see if we can. Rope in someone from ZBA and Finance Committee and the Select Board to serve as an advisory group to help, help us get to yes. With our accessory apartment bylaws. There, any volunteers who could? Don't that Kathy, great. I know Kathy's here, but I can look at you there.
It feels like there are two Kathys from here.
That's right. Someone else with, with Kathy Sylvester? All right, well, that's.
Kathy, tag me in. I, I'm, I'm really kind of feeling very strongly about this finance committee piece, but I would like to, I have looked at ADUs for a long time. I mean, just starting with what we have, right? And then moving on to. The, the, you know, looking at that as, as part of our housing production, because we do have a housing production plan. So I think that's how to loop in these other groups. That's, that, that plan was not made by the planning board. That was made by a, a working group.
Well, I'll need some help.
And I was on that.
So you want to do it with me?
Yeah.
Thank you, Rachel. Jennifer?
I wouldn't mind. I helped a lot in Amherst with their supplemental apartments.
That would be really helpful. And looking at what kinds of things we can do in terms of.
It's, it's all of, yeah, that it's like the size of the unit. There's a lot of little minutia things that I was, had experience with. So I wouldn't mind being part of it, just.
Unintended consequences, huh? Ah, goodness, I had talked about having public comments on all of this while we were making or before making decisions. Do we have any public comments on? Public comments on the, the meeting this evening? As we have one.
Nobody, we had a Pat. Oh, here's Erin. Somebody just.
Well, Erin, if you'd like to join in at another point, raise your hand. I did not see any other business anticipated beforehand. Reports I had Andrea gave a nice report at CCI meeting on the open space. Survey and results. And I asked her to speak tonight specifically, if in fact, I'm not sure that the open space committee has even gone this far. But I would be interested in, I think we would be interested in what are planning board initiatives? That could help support conclusions from the open space.
Yes, and I can say that we are not there yet, but very preliminary results. When people were asked how they'd like, for example, Community Preservation Act, money spent. Fifty percent said they want it spent on open space protection. So a lot of not building. And the second highest was outdoor recreation. That was considered very highly. And what the open space committee. Asked in that, in the survey is, what projects would residents like to see prioritized over the next seven years? The highest was protecting forest land.
So those areas, I mean, protecting forest land, farmland and preserving open space. I mean, those definitely tie into zoning bylaws. So if you're able to, I don't know, have the open space committee zone in a little bit more specifically on. Areas that they think.
Well, so, so we met. Either, yeah, this week or last week, I'm sorry. It's a blur. And the report that got sent out, summary of the survey was a hundred pages long. So there's, I can't really send a lot out to you yet, because it's really, really preliminary. We just spent the entire meeting. Discussing the, the results that, that we, that we had seen. But the most, the most. The initial themes that we found coming out were, again, emphasis on protection of farmland forests and the aquifer. Emphasis on walkability and hikeability. So that's very important in terms of the park, sidewalks in general. There's a lot of concern with water, and it was, came in all different kinds of ways. Drinking water quality and quantity, access to the rivers. And then concerns about flooding. So water and all its. And then there was a real concern about communications, about the available resources that the town already has. So when people were asked, did you use this facility? Did you go there? A lot of people said, I didn't know about that. So it's about communications for what the town actually does already have. And then, of course, everyone wants to maintain the town's rural character.
Well, Andrea, if you can. Planning board, I mean, what specifics might we be able to do to help you?
And I'm saying, right now, I don't think we, we, we have anything yet, except to let you know that. So the other, the other thing of, of interest is that the three. Most cited activities that people do are hiking, walking and gardening. So I think we should really think a lot about how people can move around town, hiking, walking. And then perhaps with some of our planning of. Areas, you know, I don't know, I was even thinking the leary lot. People want gardens. And so maybe we should think about how we can add those things into the plans that we have. So the park doesn't have anything specific, the leary lot. I mean, I can just imagine raised beds in one area of the. Of the leary lot that people could, you know, claim and garden in, or could be some, anyway, that, that, those are things.
Or even more specifically, as you're talking about walkability, I mean, that has to do with complete streets and sidewalks. And also frontage, we've, there have been some questions about frontage, reducing frontage in the center village. Districts that could potentially. Accomplish a lot of things. So.
Yeah, so again, very, very, very preliminary.
Okay, well, thank you. Yeah, well, keep, keep them working on it. Give us some marching orders. Any other committee reports?
I know, I can report on CCI. It's, it's, it's a lot. But we did. Joe Comfort, Natalie Blay were here last, I think it was last, what's today? Okay, must have been last week. And they, they had asked to come and meet after we did the CCI presentation. And so they, I guess the, what they were really looking for is a list of what we're doing. How they can support us, what funding we have, what funding we're going for. And, you know, in the mix, we talked about the shared streets and spaces and how we were submitting that grant. They said, oh my God, that's great to know. Because they can advocate for us, and they'll advocate for, for the community one stop. So we did, we were putting that together. I put the list together. I worked on it with Casey, and then we just had that meeting with the select board. So, you know, a lot of what you're talking about, we did talk about the leary lot, we talked, that is in the conversation, making it beautiful. Not just functional, but beautiful, which is really important. You know, just talked about where we are in the process. So there, you know, there's a lot going on. There is a lot of money coming into the state. And I just said, you know, we, we want some of that money. I mean, I don't have all the extra notes that we wrote. But I think it's something like nine point one billion dollars coming in, or actually, it was, it was a total of seventeen billion. There's nine billion left, and we haven't seen any of that here. So that is going to be a big topic of conversation, get some of that money. And hopefully ask for money, more money for the town common. Let's see, I think, yeah. Ask, asking for more money for the plans for the former grammar school and the slash community senior center. And more money for the sewer, which is the big one, because the sewer, I'll tell you, the sewer is eating up all the money that we have right now. So I don't, I don't want to look back over the, over the so many years and to say why we are where we are now. And that's exactly why we're doing this now, so we don't, so we don't continue to be in the hole that we're in now. Because that's why we're in, because we, a lot of things haven't been done. So.
All right, thank you, Denise. Any other reports from any committees? I did receive an email today, and with BCCs, it's hard to tell if everyone received it, the attorney general's decisions on our articles. Oh, okay, so I'll forward that to you tomorrow. But. Article ten from, these have to do with our. Our October town meeting. Article ten, which was a tourism overlay district, was approved. There was also special note that there was a request that the attorney general review whether or not it was constituted spot zoning. And they, they, attorney general and their staff and her staff found that there was no grounds to deny it based on spot zoning. Unfortunately, article eleven, which was the tourism over day, overlay district map. Was not yet approved, because the postings were in. Were not adequate, or were not, were defective. So newspaper ads need to be run within twenty-one days. And, but then then the attorney general will, attorney general's office will issue the approval. They did say that apart from the defect in the post. They did say that apart from the defect in the postings, they feel satisfied that the requirements of this article, um, were met in the statute. And this again was the tourism overlay map. I apologize. Next time I bring water. The last thing was, um, Article eight from, um, March 15th, well, from, I believe it was March 15th. This was about our municipal, no, it was from the October meeting, our municipal frontage. And again, there was an issue with postings. But, um, yeah, thank you, Denise. They apparently posting issues have been corrected and the Attorney General will be issuing a, um, final report by March 15th. On that. So, those in general is good news in relation to the articles that we brought forward to town meeting. Any questions? Our mail, uh, which now, I feel like those towns that I talked to really feel vibrant. Montague's having, um, a public hearing, thank you, on March night about a special, um, permit for a Montague Retreat Center. So that Wednesday, uh, Wednesday, March night. Whately had two public meetings. They did, uh, make a decision and granted a special permit for Green Jeans Farm, to cultivate marijuana in greenhouses. And, um, they also had a public hearing on February 22nd, for some citizens, uh, to reduce the size of solar setbacks and, um, I don't know the results of that public hearing. In Greenfield, there were three, um, public hearings, one with their ZBA to, um, issue a special permit for adult-use marijuana retail establishment. Another, um, public hearing on March 10th, that was a special permit to allow sale of a used motor vehicles business on a high street property. And then the special, a special permit was granted by the Greenfield Planning Board to convert an existing carriage house into a detached ADU. So issues that we deal with are certainly hot in our other towns. Our next meeting, uh, March 22nd, I will say that, um, I've had some good conversations with Jen and peer review, and that seems to be going forward.
21st?
21st. March 21st, sorry, yes. For, and that will be, um, a continuation of our public hearing for the park and whatever other business we have. And, um, I believe that, uh, April 25th still is the tentative date for town meeting. Is that correct, Jen? April 25th?
April 25th.
Got it. Okay. With town elections, May 2nd, and we have two members of our planning board who are running for reelection, Kathy Watroba and Anne Mary Cludier. Um, and I believe that's it for this evening, five minutes before nine.
Are you waiting for me to move that we adjourn? All the way from Sanibel Island, Florida. I moved that we adjourn.
My second.
Thank you very much, Rachel, for your Florida. Anne, Anne Mary, thank you very much.